You guys ready to go?
We're ready for me.
The Runnie Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231, the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Omen Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Barrow Hall, Runnie Post Office, Mary Bold School, Alliance Bingham School, Prey Stanning School, and the Runnie Public School District website. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Ms. Ruffin.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes, Ms. Beebe.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Yeah, here. Sorry. You skipped a Patty, so you confused us.
Ms. Adair.
Here.
Who's mixing things up? Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
We have a call.
Also present, Marka Inucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Shaw McCarron, Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jay Gezzi, Principal of Bingham and Downing School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal of Bold School, Ms. Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education, and Mr. Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. This time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 21st.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Ruffin.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I think I'm gonna throw it over to you, right?
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, everyone, so as Director of Curriculum Instruction, I get to present to the district for the Department of Education, within 60 days of receiving results, any test scores received from the state. This year, we administered the Star Strong Assessment. Star Strong was administered to students in grades four through eight within the district. And the purpose of this assessment was, you know, similar to NJSLA, but major differences that we saw were the fact that it was a much shorter test. So it was about a 45-minute test that was given in ELA, a 45-minute test that was given in math, whereas when we used to do the NJSLA in the spring prior, that would be over the course of four days that students would be taking the assessment for. The ELA test and the math test each consisted of 10 to 20 questions that students were given in key highlighted standard areas to provide staff members with on-demand data in terms of strengths, weaknesses, areas that they needed to focus with students on to start strong within the 2021-2022 school year. It was a statewide assessment for ELA, math, and science. It's similar to NJSLA, but it is not the same. So while you look up, and what's interesting is when we look at the data comparison between prior NJSLA data and performance versus the Star Strong Assessment, there are strong correlations between the two. However, the state says not to use those comparisons in the presentation as it's comparing apples to oranges in that situation. Pearson, the company Pearson, is the creator of the Star Strong Assessment, just as they are the NJSLA. Grade six was also assessed in science. So based upon a subset of prioritized standards from the prior academic year, students in fourth grade were given third-grade standards. Students in sixth grade were given fifth-grade standards to see how they performed in those areas and to see what standards needed the most attention overall. One short set of approximately 10 multiple-choice questions in ELA and 20 in math, there were no extended response or writing components on this test. So students were not writing anything out for their answers in this assessment. Assessment took 45 to 60 minutes. Teachers were given immediate access to online results for students as well as results by question. So as the, in my position, I was able to go in and by grade level, I was able to pull up each assessment piece, see what percentage of students got it correct, incorrect, or partially correct in each of the areas. I was able to see the wording of the questions. How were the questions asked? What were the answer choices? What was the common answer choice that students selected? So if they got it incorrect, I was able to see what the differences were between that. And that was a conversation piece that we had as a staff as well. Results were provided in three categorized of supports needed, meaning strong support was needed, some support was needed, less support was needed, were the three areas that they focused on.
So they were the three categories. There was no, like, no support needed.
Correct. So strong, some, or less. So results by question report, this is new and I kind of discussed that with you, but that gives you an idea of what it looked like for me. So this is ELA. It gives you the 10 questions for the grade level. The little blue dot that's there, if I were to click on that, the entire question would pop up for me or for the teacher to see, so that way we were able to say, like, what do you mean that they did this? Like, this is something we do all the time. It might be the wording of the question. It might be the vocabulary that's used. There's different areas that we were looking at to try to identify and target where instruction could be set or why certain students might have gotten that wrong. You can see it then gives correct, incorrect, and partial, because in some cases, some of the questions might have had a two-part response that had to be given. So if they got the first part correct and the second part incorrect, it would be a partial credit that they would be given. This is allowed for questions by analysis and for teachers to attend to specific skills within a standard. So as we move into our Tier Two and Tier Three instruction, where, you know, we might be pulling kids within the classroom in small groups or pulling the kids out of the classroom for additional support and help, we're actually able to utilize this information and data to address specific things with groups of students and target those skills that might help boost the students' instructional strategies that we're using in the classroom. Overall, grades four through eight, if you look at ELA, strong support might be needed. You can see 34%. Some support may be needed, 31%. Less support needed, 35%. Math, 65%, strong support needed. 26%, some support needed. 9% less support needed. Science, 51%, strong support. 44%, some support. 5% less support. So as we look at this information, we pull the data from it. Teachers are then utilizing this to drive instruction and identify what those needs are within the classroom to support students, whether that be through RTI or also tutoring. Then we provide a breakdown of each grade level as far as where each grade level fell. So this is fourth grade, focused on third-grade standards for both ELA and math. You'll see that science is blank. Grade five was focused on fourth-grade standards. Grade six was focused on fifth-grade standards. The fifth-grade standards one was a big topic of conversation across Directors of Curriculum throughout the county due to the fact that the math component stating that there was a low result across everyone compared to other grade levels in comparison. Grade seven was focused on sixth-grade standards. And grade eight was focused on seventh-grade standards. The state then also provides a breakdown based on gender, ethnicity, students with disabilities, English language learners, and other demographics. So as you can see, we also look at it from female, male. Ethnicity is the second chart below. Then we do students with disabilities, focused on IEPs and also 504s. In the middle there, we have English language learners. And on the bottom, it focuses on economically disadvantaged, non-economically disadvantaged, and homeless. In January, we will be sending home individual student reports for parents to see, which will give a breakdown of how their students perform in ELA and mathematics, or science also, on the assessment. One of the things we're going to be sending home with, now, this is, as I said before, this is an assessment that was the first time that was given. It's 10 to 20 questions that were given, so that's to be taken into consideration. One thing we will be sending with this data when we send it home is going to be our Star Benchmark scores from fall, because they would have just taken the winter benchmark as well. So that way, parents are going to have two data points to look at to see student performance and where they are overall. And then, as I said before, the purpose of this case is to provide the district with on-demand data that can be used to drive instruction and make informed decisions. Based on the information provided below, are a few things we will be doing with this information, such as using this to drive instructional decisions for both current-year students and also prior-year students. So for example, teachers, so for example, teachers in teaching fourth grade might be looking at the fifth-grade student data to see how their students perform on fourth-grade standards. Does that make sense? Because those are the standards that they'll be teaching, in addition to looking at their current students and how they performed on the prior-year data as well. ELA was stronger overall compared to math. Skill-specific gaps versus learning loss is something that we're looking at. Also, as we make decisions, such as adding more math interventions to the district, this year, we have a math coach intervention specialist that we have pushing into classrooms to support students as well in that area, and that the data also supports that decision. Utilizing data to provide supports to students in identified areas such as Tier Two, Tier Three instruction, students for tutoring, we are offering tutoring across the district. Principals are putting numbers together in terms of how many students are utilizing that, but that is being offered to all students K through eight currently. And then, of course, continuing to review this data with benchmark assessment data and making informed instructional decisions moving forward. So using it for a purpose and then driving our instruction based on the data that we have. Questions?
I have one question.
Over.
So do we have data from other districts to compare to?
We can pull data from other districts that wasn't provided by the state. So if you would like to see similar data from other districts, I can absolutely reach out to the other districts to get that for you.
That would be great. And when will this, will this be revisited on the student, same test will be taken again?
That has not been given by the Department of Education as far as whether or not we will be administering this test again, or if it will be administered. So as of right now, they are discussing NJSLA, which is the assessment that was given previously, but remember, it wasn't given last year because of COVID and hybrid. And a part of why they said they weren't giving it was because they were given the Star Strong Assessment. So the Star Strong Assessment is, you know, and one thing I will say, Angel, that, you know, was a consensus among other curriculum directors throughout the county was, this is actually one state assessment that we gave that actually provided valuable information that we were able to utilize immediately, whereas with NJSLA, we normally don't get that data information until past summer. You know what I mean? And at that point, it's more difficult to actually utilize that immediate information.
However, it's only 10 questions. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way, shape, or form.
It's only 10 questions?
But like, 10 questions.
One wrong.
One, like, I understand what I'm saying. So like, I know.
Partially wrong.
There are crazy numbers, girl, and I heard you hop and pop with that one. I think it was grade five.
Six.
Grade six, so the fifth-grade standard. But, but it's 10 questions. So like, if you're having a bad day or you didn't understand one, like, I mean, think about how hard it is.
It was a 45-minute assessment that we felt within the first.
And then you said some of the questions had two parts. So if you got one part wrong, you're going to get the second part wrong.
Yep.
You understand what I'm saying? So not that this data isn't helpful for teachers to have it immediately, but I don't know how much.
I will say, based on other data we're giving by the state, this was probably the most beneficial that I've received.
This is more beneficial data for.
100%.
That's why you asked how you compare with business. That was exactly why I asked, because you were right and wrong.
Joe?
No. I've talked with two other school districts, and they're seeing the same kind of results. And I think we can all look back and say, the students being out of our school classrooms for 18 months, they've all fallen behind because of that. And now it's time, we've got to try to get them caught up. So that really compounded kids growing academically.
Well, that's why the state didn't say that any kid needed no support.
No.
They all need something.
Yep.
Right now. Any other questions for Dr. McCarron?
And then this individual schools will be going home in January along with the Star Reading and Star Math scores, so parents will be receiving that as well.
And that's current data.
That's current data from fall till winter.
Right.
To show student growth along those lines.
Anything to add to that at all?
I mean, as a father of a current sixth-grade student with that hurt test scores yesterday, she fell in that, and she does very well in that, but she was in that strong gap thing as well, so I'm not even telling her what she got.
Right.
It was devastating, but I understand where the concerns would be when you see those numbers, but, you know, I appreciate the fact that the staff is utilizing the information to guide the instruction. Is it going to take us again? For some reason, in the spring, I'm sure those numbers will be increased. But to give students, again, to give students a test.
Yeah, it was like the second week of school.
It came to school.
Within the first six weeks.
It's very difficult to say, again, not to make excuses.
We got to teach them how to be students again. Sorry. I'm still waiting, and that's still being done. That's still being done. I went into a ninth-grade classroom today, for the first time this year, I'm like, whoa, whoa, sit down. Why are you not sitting? And sit down.
If you look at some of the Star Assessment data, is it better?
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean. Like, that's something that, and you can look at, we took, our kids took that last year here.
Yep.
Even though it might have been online, I remember that data was, we still did that last year and the year before.
I think it's twice our age.
So, yeah. That's all I have.
Dan, take that off the video that I comment on. I'm like.
Is there a plan on how we want to deliver the information, not let it just mail home? I think, you know, it could twist a few people up when they see it.
So that's one of the reasons why we're waiting till January, so when we send it home, it's going to be going home with the Star results. I will probably be attaching a district letter to the front of it, just explaining the fact, you know, some of the key points. It was based on 10 questions in this area, 20 questions on this area. It was taken within the first six weeks of school. It's merely a data point in terms of helping to drive instruction and identify those areas. And then I'll explain the Star Assessment results as well and go that way.
But it wasn't the first six weeks of school, because you're not going to wait till the last minute with anything.
Correct.
You didn't wait until the last minute.
No, it was within the first four weeks of school.
Right.
Because we were waiting for the information.
Or you would have did it first. I know, you're, I know. Anything else on Star Strong?
No.
All right, other correspondence, we have a resignation letter from Board Member Dennis Lego that was effective last month, so there is, you'll be seeing Dr. McCarron, you will talk about that later.
Under my report, yes.
Okay. At this time, there's public comment for agenda items only. Does anybody have any public comment on agenda items?
Not really agenda items, but Joan Braywood, Bingham, and Danny, the teachers and aides at both, all the schools here. Want to thank Samantha Smalling for all her service to the district. You've been here on the board as long as I've been here. I know from personal experience what a thankless job this can be, so we just want to reach out and say thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other public comments?
Yeah, as a member of the public, I want to say how upset I am about number six. If that's okay. About, if I'm right before this one corresponds. I'm thinking he's a member of the.
Oh, about Dennis, yes.
Yes, I am.
However, I must say, on his behalf, that him and his wife have decided, wife decided very quickly that she was going to retire. She was, had to go back to work full-time in the office, and they want to do that. They're deciding whether or not there are going to be snowbirds in Arizona and/or, I mean, or Florida. But I think he told us she likes the tennis courts in Florida better than Arizona, so I think it's going to be, I think it's, the last time I spoke to him, he was leaning towards Florida.
Clay course, definitely.
So the clay course, the clay courses in Florida, so good for them.
I didn't know that.
Right, I didn't know either, but you know tennis, and Dennis is a tennis, he knows it all, so we wish him the best and thank him for his diligence. If anything else, if nothing else, then Superintendent's report.
I appreciate it. Just a couple of things. This three months, we're studying where we were to start the year. We don't see any major changes with that moving forward. All school activities, athletics, extracurriculars are going on. Our body of youth coaches doing a great job navigating those things. You know, Mr. Maloney had talked, we had a couple of hip-ups for basketball, many a season. We've kind of settled down a little bit for now, not going wood, but as challenges come, we kind of adapt, so it's been good. You know, we'll keep rolling as long as we can. Last week, obviously, with the, and you know how I feel about social media sometimes, this was not a good thing, but that challenge that was going around, I guess from TikTok, you know, we did send some correspondence out prior. We did have some parents keep their children home that day. We posted any work that was, they were having that day, we posted online. They weren't able to livestream in because it's only for quarantine students, but we did post that stuff. Do want to thank the Runnie Police. They helped us out. They had some extra people on at those mornings and the afternoon that day to monitor and enforce any protocols, so I do appreciate their help. He's always a phone call boy, our chief of police, so it's always great to have him. Our school nurses, we continue. And our administrators follow his guidance with the Department of Health and County Health Department. It changes almost, if not every week, every day. I think since I wrote this report, probably will Friday, it's changed twice since then. There was something that came out last week, but I think I sent the board in my update regarding the close contact, about the 14-day quarantine is optimal, but they are shorting some of those quarantine restrictions. We can reduce the exclusion, I want to leave this so I'm not getting anything mixed up. If you test positive, when you're asymptomatic, you may be reduced your exclusion period from 10 days or seven days with a negative test result, collectively, five, seven days, but continue their monitoring. If those have, you're exposed to somebody, that'd be unvaccinated staff or students. So we did tweak some of that, and it's rough when we're telling students and their parents that they're going to be out for, right now, or I think we're still going to be orange heading towards the red, that they're going to be out for 14 days. So we are looking for something like that. Yesterday, I believe the governor and his office didn't mention that testing stay, that they're going to try to pilot that hopefully coming in September. We were not contacted by either the county or the state about that, but that would be basically if Samantha tests positive and I'm being in close contact, I can test for a series of days, and as long as I test negative, I can stay at school. I would have quarantine. We haven't heard anything about that yet. Might come out on Christmas Eve. But they sent us.
That probably about 5:00 PM on Christmas Eve.
It might be.
That sounds about.
You never know. So I'll keep you posted on that, and that'd be great. I mean, I believe California, Illinois, Georgia, and another state apparently doing that, having some success. But again, we're talking resources as well.
Right.
Who's going to give the test? You know, right now, we're testing unvaccinated staff just on that once-a-week basis, and we're hoping to move in a direction, we're possibly test students as well. We've gotten no guidance on that either. There's protocol you have to follow with parents, getting permission for the test. They wouldn't have, apparently have to be here, but they'd have to get permission to have their child tested, if that's the case. So there's all logistical kind of, we're going to take it to go through, but, you know, we'll keep you posted on that. Other than that, I've had no indication from the state for the county about relaxing any protocols this time, other than that testing protocol that, you know, they're trying to, they're trying to replace regarding testing stay, so I'll keep you posted on that. County and state committees, alternate route, if you're, you know, somebody in the business world or private sector that wants to do the teaching, we still have an alternate route pathways program.
I'm sorry, I saw Tracy laugh in my head.
I'm just saying, so if anybody wants to change.
No one wants to do our job.
As an alternate route candidate way back when, it's a great program, you know, but I don't know where we're going to find people for that, so who knows? I do commend our staff again for the management of staffing shortages. We don't have substitute teachers. There's not a district in this state, maybe even this country, that has people, you know, lined up to be substitute teachers. Some of the districts are doubling their price on a daily fee. We do have a little bit better than we were about a month ago, but we're still, so it's a juggle, it's juggling. I do, you know, commend the staff and the administration for Juggling Act, it's been interesting. Tex Boe, supposed to be held in January at Harris. Since I'm on the committee for the state, they asked me to go. Not going to lie, the way the numbers are right now, I don't think I'm going to attend to Tex Boe, but you never know. I might send Dr. McCarron, because he likes all the free stuff they give you there. So you might be able to take my badge for that, since I get the gift for free, I think. So thank the Holiday Committee, distributing gifts and food this week, always a great thing. I know all the offices, I know all the teachers and staff who contributed, so thank you for that. And just once again, remote instructions only available for students who are quarantined through COVID protocols. If, you know, for some reason, somebody has the sniffles or they're gone on vacation, they're not permitted to attend virtually. We do try to accommodate, so if somebody's saying they're going away, we do try to post the work and get that to them, like we always have done in the past. We just can't, we've had some feedback from parents, for instance, on Friday, if you want to keep your students home, why can't they stream in? We just can't do that right now. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great holiday, and we'll talk to you in 2022. If you have any questions, that's great.
I don't think so. Okay, so my doctor, McCarron.
Okay, so main focus in all of my areas would be two-fold at this point in time. We do have our full state review this year. Our review date is February 9th, which used to be all documents had to be in two weeks prior. They moved it up to four weeks prior, so everything must be in by January 9th. So the offices are working on that a lot. I told you previous prior, we do have a new auditor, a new main auditor. We celebrate Calavita, but in terms of who used to lead our team, no longer being there. We're still working on the audit and making sure that all the things are finalized and kind of re-going over things that had previously been done two months ago that are stuck in someone else's email at this point in time, so we have to kind of redo things. Negotiations, I know Dan's going to give an update on that later, but that started with the REI, so making sure that everything that's requested has been provided. Starting to look at 22, 23 needs, because before we know it, we will be having budget conversations, as budget is right around the corner. The state's mid-year review questions, which usually come out in November, came out yesterday and will be due on January 4th. It's nice that they're waiting until after break for us to get that to them, so I'm very appreciative. Star Strong results were received for curriculum and have to be mailed out within 60 days of receipt. Tutoring has started across all grade levels and is open for all students participating as a part of the funds that we receive to support students coming back to school. Move forward. And then, of course, the curriculum, County Meeting, which is a monthly meeting, this past month focused on social studies standards and a lot of standards that have to be rewritten over the next two years as far as working with other districts on that. The other piece I wanted to talk about was, it was mentioned in our correspondence that Dennis Lego did resign after the last board meeting. So the district posted the board opening, it was posted on the Facebook page, it's posted on the district website, it was posted at all the schools and also in the retrospect. The deadline to submit a letter of interest to me is tomorrow at 3 o'clock, so if anyone is interested, those letters have to be in. At reorg meeting, just to give everyone an idea of what that will look like, at reorg, I will start that meeting, in terms of running that meeting, as every reorg happens, I will be doing oath of office with the three individuals who were elected to the board. They will then take their seat at that time. Once we have an eight-member board, the board will then be interviewing the candidates in public who have put a letter of interest in stating that they wanted to be on the board. So that way, the eight members will be the ones making that decision as far as who that ninth member will be. Once the ninth member is, a nomination's given, a motion's given, seconded, and we do a roll call vote, the ninth member of the board will be given the oath of office, and then that member will take their spot on the Board of Education. From there, we will move on to a regular rework business, which is officers, meeting dates and times, all of those things that we have to do. There will not be many agenda items besides that. There might be a bills list, simply so we could pay vendors for that evening, but we will be keeping that to the limit as well. Any questions, because I went through that very quickly in terms of what that looks like?
I do not have a question, but I would just, I have to say, to all incoming and current board members, it is my goal to get rid of Tuesday meetings. When I was elected, meetings were on Wednesdays, it worked. Tuesdays are huge, I know we switched for various people's jobs and things like that. It was always on Wednesday. I knew it was going to be a problem for me on Mondays, but I ran, I was elected, and and I committed, and I made it happen. My attendance has been perfect. Plus cancer, eye cancer, childbirth, child loss, you name it. So what I can tell you is Tuesdays conflict with, for me, the meetings that I used to go to for the borough, they conflict with every people. So I just, I hope collaboratively, we can do away with Tuesdays being our meetings.
Well, that would be something that you would bring up now and talk to everybody about, and just because I know that Dr. McCarron likes to post them.
Right. But it's, it's.
And, and I agree. Also, you're still, you're still on the senior merchant bill one term of the year.
Yep.
Right now.
Yep.
So yours are on Tuesdays too, so that's a conflict. Okay.
I mean, we have administrators that had a conflict when we switched to Tuesday. So all of that being said, is reorg, it needs to be a topic.
Refresh my memory, what was it, the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday.
Instead of the third Tuesday?
Yep.
Thanks, Mrs. Mark, I can always count on you, so.
And that will be one of the topics discussed at reorg.
So that would be, just because you can look at your calendar and look at the dates, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So say, in the third Wednesday.
Because it is going to be a reorg issue.
And for the most part, it's always that third, there are some during budget, budgets.
We always have to switch, yeah.
But then also.
There might be one or two that you have to switch due to graduation and/or you want to get some, some people hired.
The holiday this week is.
Holiday, things like that, yeah, but.
Yeah, we can, I can create some derivative schedules and some things I can push out.
Yeah, I just, I mean, again, it was a huge conflict for me. I was for I Montreux, I was fixing, coming to meetings, missing my kids' games, but I was here, I committed, and I was here.
Okay, I will definitely.
And then we switched for two board members, one isn't even here anymore, and that's like.
Also, every board member in regards to the board opening and the seating of the ninth board member, um, every board member was given the public notice, but also behind that, they were given the policy, which is policy 0143, which actually outlines, I highlighted it, the order in which things take place when electing a vacant position in board member. It is very small print, I apologize, you might need to amend my address for that one. But, um, that, that way, everyone understands what the process will look like in terms of, you know, someone getting a motion, a second, roll call vote, and what that looks like across the board. Any questions for me?
No, this is going to be my last board meeting, I just want to say, I stress, I can get out a copy of the board handful, board member handful for our new board members, it'll be very helpful. Thank you.
Just to make you happy, I heard Dr. McCarron telling Mrs. O'Brien that after the January meeting, they will get together and go over that, so. And you aren't even here yet, Chaz, so.
Chaz, it's been a while since we've had a board member.
Yeah.
In the past, that's what we would do, we would do the normal, you know, sit down and go over all things, you know, Board of Education, so we'll be going back to basics. The only other thing before we move on is under district reports.
Yep.
For evacuation under Vols. The Vols students are very quick, but 10 seconds is a little too quick. It would be three minutes and 10 seconds for the evacuation, not 10 seconds. You got it? We're working on it. It's been a gold minute, you know? Exactly.
That must be related there.
I don't know. There you go.
I didn't even see that. All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. McCarron? How about on the principals' reports, nurses' reports, building and ground, or special education report? Everyone go ahead.
Shout out to all the nurses right now.
Oh, I, I don't even have words. Other reports, committee reports, I wrote down, if you don't want me to speak, I know it's not, I just have, the negotiation committee, there's progress happening, just so everyone is aware, that the board and the REA met, and they have two meetings set up for January, so the board members, I'm not on that committee, but I just, I'm speaking for, for Dan. And speaking of Dan, since Chaz is leaving us, Dan has agreed to be the Camden County Ed Services Commission representative, so I, I know you asked us to do that, to get that taken care of, so Dan volunteered, so thank you, Dan.
And at the meeting this month, it just stands as is, nothing big is all happening, and I think the meeting was all 15 minutes, so nothing to report.
Great. Any, any other committee reports? I know that they're going to be soon, anything else to add there?
Well, I mean, within the borough, we would like to congratulate Dan's son. We would like to congratulate your brother. I could go on and on, you know?
Yeah, we have a lot of exciting things happening in town. So, so if you, if you move your meetings to Wednesday, then you'll be able to.
I'll be able to go. I get stuck going to the three-hour caucus and miss the 20-minute council meeting because of this.
Yeah.
So I can tell you everything that's going on.
Maria got her voice back, in case I think. Maria can speak again.
Hey, it's too long.
Maria, Maria can speak again. No, I'm Maria, you know, I love you. All right, um, I'll work it up. New business, we read.
I still haven't seen Jenny since last meeting, and I need to see her, just so you know.
Say that again?
I haven't seen Jenny since last meeting, when I was looking for her, just tell her.
Oh, that's so funny. New business, property and transportation. I need a motion to approve items numbers one through four, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckhine.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion for items numbers one through eight. Motion made by Patty.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Angel. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckhine.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam's.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
I stopped in Ms. Davidson, I was like, wait, she's not here.
There was one addition under finance number 14 there to approve submission of 2021 AUP S U M to the department.
Audit summary.
Audit summary, okay, thanks. To the Department of Ed, just so you guys know, I need a motion for under finance for items one through 14 now.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckhine.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam's.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under number seven, I mean, under curriculum, there was a number seven added as well, submission of English language learner three-year plan to the Department of Ed too, just so everyone's aware. I need a motion to approve item numbers one through seven under curriculum.
All questions to approve, one through seven, under curriculum.
Motion made by Patty. Seconded by Dan. Any questions?